That gets us to the point right now to consider this item thirty-seven. We need a motion. Councilmember Alter, make a motion.
Thank you. I would like to move a passage of the base item for thirty-seven plus my amendments.
Okay, the base motion.
I can do it separately if you prefer.
Okay, we'll do them together, the base motion with the amendments as posted by Councilmember Alter. Is there a second to this motion? Councilmember Poole, seconds. Councilmember Alter, you want to address it first?
Sure, thank you. I would, I'll address my amendments, but then I would also like to see if Ms. Muskinen could speak to us broadly about the blueprint and the next steps on the Kroll report.
Yeah, we're going to move her over to Councilmember.
Thank you. So, we have been going through a long process here and there are some serious parts of what folks have said tonight that resonate with me and you know, we might have done this better in two weeks, but here we are and I believe through the conversations and what I've heard that there's a serious commitment of moving forward in a way that we get a pilot one hundred and forty-fourth academy that meets the best possible way forward for us and sets us on the course to continue the process into the one hundred and forty-fifth cadet class and beyond. I'm proposing these amendments because I believe that council and the public need additional touchpoints and transparency on the recommendations, implementation, and the process progress of these reforms. I have language that creates guardrails around the blueprint and makes clear the stipulations for bringing forward a budget amendment and for starting the one hundred and forty-fifth cadet class. I want to thank Councilmember Kassar for indicating his support of my amendment on the message board and I look forward to the conversation tonight. My first amendment is to add a whereas clause that is directly pretty much from the Kroll report and says whereas the Kroll report recommends that absent exceptional circumstances, the stated long-term measures be implemented prior to the start of the one hundred and forty-fifth cadet class. And then I add in the be it resolved, several touchpoints and transparency items. So first is updates on the progress of the academy reforms shall be presented to council in April twenty-twenty-one and May twenty-twenty-one. This recognizes that there is embedded in this a bit of a leap of faith, but that leap of faith requires the city manager and his staff to come back and for the Kroll report to come back, et cetera, so that we can see that these things are moving forward. It lays out that we would have an interim report, including the independent evaluators' observations of the one hundred and forty-fourth cadet class at the midpoint of the academy. And then it takes the whereas clause and makes that into direction so that absent exceptional circumstances, we will implement the Kroll report, long-term measures before the commencement of the one hundred and forty-fifth class. And we will have a status report on that before the commencement of the one hundred and forty-fifth cadet class. Then layout following the completion of the one hundred and forty-fourth cadet class, some things that at a minimum we want the city manager to do in terms of reporting and then data collection, et cetera. And then finally, it says that we cannot have a budget amendment related to the pilot one hundred and forty-fourth cadet academy until after the final Kroll report is presented and the scheduled April twentieth city community reimagining public safety task force recommendations are presented to council. So those are the amendments and if I, if I can ask Ms. Muskinen if, unless it's the city manager who would like to do it, to speak to the blueprints broadly and what are the next steps with respect to the Kroll report?
Thank you, Councilmember Alter, and then pass it over to our Director of the Office of Police Oversight, Farah Muskinen. Again, a lot of work went into not only the recommendations that are coming forward to you today, but the commitment that we have for the path forward to make sure that we have a reimagined academy, knowing that there will continue to be improvements that we will make along the way. We agree that there will need to be additional checkpoints and so supporting many of the things that you outlined here in your amendment. But with that, I'll turn it over to Director Muskinen.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Farah Muskinen, Director of the Office of Police Oversight, and also the Lead on Resolution Sixty-Six. Councilmember Alter, thank you for your question. I'll start with Kroll first. They do still have additional areas for review. Part of what they're going to be reviewing was some of the feedback that they received directly from council from the March second work session. They're going to be looking into some potential disparate impacts with women cadets and cadets of color. They're assessing more of the curriculum specifically around the diversity, equity, and inclusion courses, community engagement program, and also looking at their de-escalation training, mental health training. And particularly, this has come up, the field training officer training. And why that is important, and we've heard this repeatedly from community, is that we understand our focus right now is a training academy. What happens to, you know, once they graduate and they're in the field, does it potentially negate what they learn in the academy? And so that's why they're looking at the field training officer program because cadets have to, graduates will spend a certain amount of time with the with the field training officer and to ensure that there is continuation of the same training and same expectation when they are out in the field. As it relates to the blueprint, I will talk about it generally speaking, but I do think that this is obviously something that APD has to own and can speak more specifically to. But essentially, the goal here is opening up the door to the academy to include community involvement. We know that it has been a closed environment and now we are literally opening up the door. And the community involvement includes more engagement, specific direct engagement of community with cadets before they start the academy, during the academy, and after the academy. We're talking about more co-facilitation so that cadets are not only learning from the instructors that were in the academy, but they're also learning from community members, academics, and others outside of the law enforcement field so that they have a broader perspective in terms of what they're learning in the community, what they're learning in the academy. We're also adding community members, not only academics, but our community members with lived experience on the academic curriculum committee, and they're also working to formalize the video review process, which will be key. Because obviously, we know that that panel brought a perspective that wasn't necessarily there in the police department to provide just a different look in terms of the outcomes that happened with the videos that were being shown, particularly as it related to persons of color. And adult learning, I think, is also a key change, right? And this is the area that Dr. Kringen is bringing significant expertise in, right? It's also about the instruction. It's not only what cadets are learning, but it's how they're learning it. So it's not necessarily about sitting in a class for eight hours and learning about criminal procedure. It's about facilitating an environment where there is discourse. There are practical approaches in terms of how they're, they're, they're teaching it that allow cadets to process and understand the information. So I think focusing on the way in which cadets are learning is really important. And then we're talking about the transformative change. Obviously, this is, I know this feels warm, fuzzy, or not as, as particularly genuine to some of our community members, but we, we do have to be transformative in the changing, really looking at how we go from that warrior mentality to the guardian mentality and also looking at how we incorporate that community togetherness in the, in the academy as opposed to the us versus them mentality that we have seen and that was recognized from the community video panel report. And so at a high level, those are really the kind of the, the high-level priorities of the academy. I'll defer to the department to talk about the specifics, but I'll leave you with this, Councilmember. To a certain extent, we are working in a conceptual way of how we are going to go about doing this academy. And to a certain extent, I think we're going to have to see it in action to see whether or not the recommendations are achieving the outcomes. And I think we are going to get to a point where we're going to have to iterate it. Some things might work, some things might not, and we have to be in a position to see what is leading to the change that fundamentally we all want to see. We may not agree on the direction, but we know we want to see the change and I think we have to see it in practice so that we can ensure that we get there.
I know other folks will have questions, so I just want to add one last thought here is that, you know, if we vote to move forward tonight, I want to be really clear, we have another vote, which is on the budget. And any vote we take tonight is in anticipation that the steps in the blueprint are followed and that the spirit with which we are all approaching this, where we want to create an academy that trains guardians and not warriors and that is really setting us up to address the structural racism that has been identified and to help all, everyone in our community feel safe. So that is a real vote on the budget that is, you know, depending on how this is all structured, in the end, after we vote tonight, in my view, is a real vote and that is, that is critical that we have significant work accomplished before then and confidence that we're able to implement the short-term elements of the Kroll report and commitment to the long term by the end of the, you know, that they would be implemented for the one hundred and forty-fifth. Thank you.
Can't hear you, Mayor.
Further comments on the motion, which includes, again, the Alter amendments. Councilmember Kitchen?
I have a question. And it just has to, it been, it has to do actually with some of the work steps. So, so could you speak to these, the scope? It's, I'm wanting to understand more specifically the scope of the ACR and the scope of the community video review panel. And what I mean by scope, I mean, to what extent do the, to what extent do their recommendations have weight? In other words, in reading the back, in reading the blueprint, I'm seeing words like input. And so my question is, to what extent does the ACR and the community video review panel have the, have the scope, I should say, to, to influence what actually is done with the curriculum and what is actually done with the, with the videos? And I'm not certain who should answer that question.
Councilmember, I'm going to defer to Dr. Ann Kringen because she will be leading both of the ACR and the video panel.
Yeah, so my bottom line is if, if one of these panels says, says no thing, does that carry weight?
Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I'm being told that a bunch of callers were cut off or hung up on, and I didn't want us to get too far into this line of discussion if ultimately what we need to do is offer those speakers an opportunity to speak. So Mayor, I just wanted to get that on your radar.
Were these speakers that were speaking and then were, and, and were cut off after they had spoken for a minute? Or were these people that didn't get a chance to speak, weren't recognized?
The latter.
Okay. Clark, is there a way for people that were signed up to speak that may have been dropped to get to you? Do we have staff with us still?
Mayor, the speaker, sorry, I had to run back to the desk.
I'm sorry.
The, we already closed out the speaker registration system, so there isn't a way for us to call them in.
But the, but the registered speakers that called in, did they all get a chance to speak?
Yes, all of the speakers that called in were able to speak.
Okay, and those were the ones that had registered? Thank you.
Yes, correct.
Yeah, Pro Tem, I'm not sure what else to, to do.
I think in the past, what we've done is have them send their remarks to the clerk who distributes them to all of us. And so if there's somebody who feels like they should have been recognized because they registered, and now we can't, I would encourage them to send, send their remarks to the clerk.
It's a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Who had we recognized?
I, I had asked a question and Ms. Kringle was about to respond to it.
Okay.
Great. Hi, Ann Kringle, Austin Police Department. So that's a good question. So one of the first things that I'm doing next week is meeting with the video curriculum, the video review panel. And we're discussing who would like to continue from sort of some notes from Farah. I've heard that some would like to continue and some would like to recommend other community members who would like to be involved. And so we're going to solidify who is going to continue on in that process. But to be more direct to your question, within video review, we've, none of the videos that obviously, we've, we've stopped using videos, right? And any videos that we use for future academy classes have to be reviewed by the video review panel. So I just want to be really careful on that is that we, we are not using videos and videos that we are going to use will be reviewed.
Excuse me, excuse me, Ms. Kringle, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but just a vote. Does review mean approval?
Yes, approval. And so we will be having discussion because that's, I think, part of the engagement process in this, is that they have to be given context as to why the video is being shown. We're also collecting sort of quantitative data based on demographics, thinking about it sort of in a content analysis way of saying, okay, overall picture of all the videos that we're showing, are we disproportionately showing individuals, right, of certain groups? So we're going to start collecting that from Austin Police Department and ensuring that we're representative in our sample. So that's for video review and how we see this moving forward. In terms of curriculum review, this is going to be a new process, so we'll be very transparent about the process. The difference, I think, really is in curriculum review is that we do have mandates based on the state, right? So depending on what the recommendation is or what type of dialogue or feedback we get, we may not be able to incorporate that if it includes taking out certain information or certain content. So I don't want to say yes, absolutely, if there was a vote down that we would say, no, we're not going to continue our curriculum that way. However, we plan to be really transparent in the process. And so if there is some sort of, you know, community voice that is really worried about our content or how we're delivering something that we'll try and address it within the, within the panel or within the committee itself. But if there is some sort of discord, we will kind of move it forward to see in a transparent process what that, what that looks like. So that's sort of my answer for that is that I think videos are a little bit more easy for me to say, hey, if this is not something that is approved, that we won't be showing the curriculum. I think it's a little bit more challenging, given that some curriculum we may be teaching based on T-CO.
Thank you. I appreciate that response. With the curriculum, I was thinking more of additional items or items that we can, that we can have discretion with, given that the state requirements are a base.
Sure, yeah, absolutely. And I think in that sense, one of the challenges is we've, we obviously have time constraints, right? However, we are, we have added in thirty hours of community engagement to which we have more flexibility to think about what are we doing in terms of community voices. One of the things that I think is important, though, is that we also have to think about evidence-based practices. So what training works is something that is part of our review as well. Not just saying what feels good or what we think about, but also what actually will impact our community, right? And so there is better evidence out there now than there was maybe a couple of years ago, but we're staying current on, you know, the de-escalation training and the evaluations that are coming out of that that support de-escalation training and ensuring that we're also implementing training that works as well as training that meets community needs and allows our officers or recruits at the starting edge to really understand, you know, what is the Austin community, what are the needs of the community, but also getting the skills to engage the community and to, to do policing well.
So my last question then is, so what I'm understanding with regard to curriculum, we've already, we've called out trauma and care, which is an evidence-based practice. I'm hearing you say also that evidence-based practices related to de-escalation
Correct.
is, is, is an expectation for the curriculum to be included.
Yes, absolutely. So we do have de-escalation training, but just always making sure, as I'm sure you know, there are different sort of variations on, you know, the delivery, right? So some of the perf training, which we do do for de-escalation, but making sure it's up to date. And, and all of the types of things, because there are various types of evaluation, some have been more, you know, more scientific, some more scientific in terms of randomized control trial, while others have less supported evidence. And so we're just reevaluating our training to make sure that we're using the best type of de-escalation or the most current types of de-escalation training. So, so, yeah, absolutely. But you're right with trauma-informed, that's something that is sort of a, I would say, area that we need to improve on and make sure is part of various components in our training. And that recently in Connecticut, in terms of background, I worked on a Saki grant and we're also trying to, and, and in that particular grant, they were doing trauma-informed training, but it wasn't part of policy. So we're also really aware in Austin that we want to keep our policies relevant with our training so that it stays right across the process, that you don't just start at the academy, but that you also have it in your policy to make sure that officers can be accountable and they know what's going on and it's not forgotten along the way.
Okay. Dileges, Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you. And thank you, Councilmember Alter and Councilmember Kassar for bringing forth amendments for us to all consider. I definitely think that this is a collaborative effort and ideas from everyone are important to make this cadet class a success. I was hoping that maybe Assistant Chief Gay could give us some insight on his ideas regarding these amendments and maybe how they might play into the new academy.
Thank you, Councilmember Chief of Staff Troy Gabe with the Austin Police Department. I do think that there are a lot of things in the amendments that that Councilmember Alter put in that would be, would, would highlight and allow us some more flexibility in, in regards to sort of leaning into the evaluation, giving us opportunities to evaluate our academy as we continue to do progress. I do concur that we do need to focus on our short and long-term goals to make sure that we are making sure that those are actually being done in the academy and that we have successfully completed those. Like I said, I, I really don't really see a whole lot of, of change that we really need in the amendment. There are some things that in regards to the monitor of the class, I do think that we are looking at Kroll at doing the monitoring of the particular class, so we would probably need to discuss that a little bit further. Thank you.
Thank you. And maybe just as a follow-up, I know a lot of the callers had concerns over the things that have changed so far versus things that hadn't yet and some progress that's been made. Could you maybe highlight two or three things that you all have already started implementing with the department that are changes that were brought upon because of the report?
Absolutely. I, I mean, Farah did a wonderful job at, at sort of highlighting a lot of the work that, that we've done, but I, I really think that you, you are going to see a, a transformational academy when we start up. I, I, I believe that we have learned from the community video review panel, if I have to highlight one piece that is really going to make the change is that we brought in people that really provided our department a different view, a different lens, and provided us a, a different understanding. And, and I think that is the, the community working with us to make our academy better. I think that is going to sort of make this academy, an academy that is going to be looked at by other departments throughout the country as a model. So Farah, as I said, did a great job in the other areas, but I just want to highlight the community collaboration piece. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Further comments? Councilmember Alter?
Was there somebody else who wanted to ask anything first?
Mayor Pro Tem?
I'm not, I don't necessarily need to go first. I'm sorry, I thought you were just asking, was there somebody else?
Well, I just, I just was, nobody was raising their hand, so I have a question for Farah, but if, if, I've already spoken a lot, so if somebody else wanted to go first, I was just gonna.
And I, I don't have a question. I had comments. I, I welcome your questions. It might help, it might help my commentary. Thank you.
If you have general questions, go ahead and do that. And then I think other people would be bringing amendments and the like.
Okay, thank you. So, Ms. Muskinen, I was hoping that you could speak a little bit to the role of the independent evaluator and also how soon they will be on board. And is there a commitment that they will be on board before the academy starts?
Yes, so, thank you, Councilmembers. So the independent evaluators of recommendation from Kroll, it was contained in their preliminary analysis. And so I will be writing the scope of work for that in the hopes of including that in Kroll's current contract. And in my preliminary research, I've been modeling after consent decree monitors. And essentially, what that is, is they're going to be obviously looking at the implementation of the Kroll recommendations, not only the short term but also the long term. They will be participating in observing courses to ensure that the adult learning techniques are being utilized. They will be interviewing cadets, they will be meeting with PD faculty and also the civilian staff throughout the pendency of the pilot class. They will be doing, what I envision, I haven't written it yet, but what I envision is that they will be doing periodic updates and their updates, obviously, since this matter is so important, will go directly to the city manager to ensure that the changes that are being recommended are actually being implemented. I do believe that this will be in place before the next pilot class. I think it's an important key to ensure that it is in place before a, a class can, can commence.
Thank you. The evaluator and, you know, all these checkpoints and this ability to adapt, you know, really point to that, what, what we're trying to create here in some sense is a prototype for a model academy that the whole rest of the country and the whole state can look at. And some of this we have to learn by doing, which is important, but we also have to make sure we have the eyes on it so that we keep the momentum. And, you know, again, I want to underscore that taking this leap of faith to go forward with the steps towards the academy is assuming that the commitments that have been made that need to happen before the class can happen actually happen. And I'm sure every one of us on council will be watching and as you can hear from the community, they will be watching. And so we do need to plan ahead in order for the start of the academy. But we have to build in these steps that I have put in my amendments, for instance, that allow us to have the transparency and see that what we're promising is actually being implemented. That doesn't mean we won't make a mistake and that we won't have to learn and that we won't have to pivot and try something else. But we're trying something really big here. If this was easy, it wouldn't have taken us this long to get started again. And my hope is that our new leadership will be supportive of this process and, and really help us make the change that we're pushing to make. Thank you.
Councilmember Kassar, do you have any amendments?
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to move the amendments.
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to move the amendments that I laid out on the message board.
Councilmember Kassar moves his amendments. Are there second to Councilmember Kassar's amendments? Councilmember Kitchen seconds them. Councilmember Kassar, you want to address them?
I think the amendments square with a lot of what Councilmember Alter has laid out. It's really about making sure that if the academy is going to start in that shorter timeframe, that everything in the blueprint, we make sure that everything in the blueprints really occur, that we put belting suspenders on that and try to build community trust in that process.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. Discussion? I have a question for staff about the amendments, if I could, and Deputy City Manager, I don't know whether to direct them to you or to someone else. We had these on the board so we could go over them. We had a chance to discuss them and there were two elements of this, as I understand it, that there were some reservations about. One was having people that were actually observing the classes while they were going on because of the impact that might have on the dynamic of the adult learning situation. And the second one was the 14 days period that triggered, was associated with the budget amendment for fear that that wasn't enough time to be able to give notice to the cadets and their families to be able to gear up. Do, do, do the Kassar amendments work if we were to specify with the second bullet point that, and you didn't talk about numbers at all, Councilmember Kassar, but if we were to say that there's going to be one community member that's able to, able to observe, and if we change from 14 days to 30 days in the fourth component of this, or third component, third component of this, rather, does that meet the, the concerns that were raised?
Thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers. And I'll say that a couple things. One is, I believe that raising the date to 30 days versus 14 days does in fact alleviate it. Our concern was mostly for cadets and thinking that they would have to have some certainty, right? Some of them are working. They need to give notice. They need to arrange for child core or change their lives in a certain way to make sure they're ready for the class. And we believe that 30 days is reasonable. It also, I think, comports with the timeline that we have set out for ourselves in the blueprint and the commitment that we need to show that we have followed the steps in the blueprint and would be coming to you end of April or May and show that progress is that most forward. So we believe that 30 days supports. I'll perhaps ask AC Troy Gay to respond as well, but in terms of our concern on having additional folks, including the independent evaluator, be, be in the room. I think the one observer would be great. It would not be a distraction. Not knowing how many people or how that would work and the plural was a bit concerning in terms of whether or not that really fits into a broader model of adult learning. So it's not so much not to have folks in the room as much as not to be a distraction as people are in the classroom as we move forward. So I don't know if, Troy, you have additional insight into that, but I do think that a singular observer in addition with Croll would be fine.
I, I do know that, thank you, in reference to Croll, when this, this question was asked to them recently, I think a few weeks ago, and I, with the adult learning, with a lot of the communication with the community being engaged and the conversations that we are trying to have with our cadets about not only the community's lived experience, but also the lived experiences of the cadets, so they can learn from one another. I do think by having people in that class that are not part of that class or that learning environment may, may stifle conversation that would be healthy and needed for, for that class to grow and have, have the understandings that they, that they truly need. So not saying we couldn't do it, but I think that to have a better academy, one that we are committed to making sure is, is Councilmember Alter, the, the best in the country and to be that model. But if we are engaging and making sure that we have a community police academy together, it is, it is going to be one that will be recognized and whether or not we need that monitor per se in there. I guess I'm, I'm sort of back and forth, but I would prefer not, but it's, but definitely if it's needed, it's needed.
And are, and are you comfortable in that environment, recognizing that I heard that the objection or concern was a, was a group of people that could change the, the dynamic in the class? Obviously, this is a pilot program, pilot cadet class, we're trying to learn as much as we can to be able to have the community, have a, a single community observer. Is that something that would work with the class?
I think it's something, Mayor, that as we were looking at, and I really appreciate Councilmember Kassar's thinking about what does that look like and working with the evaluator to come up with a process, because I think that's one of the things that we'd like them to do. I'm sure that not everybody wants to be in the, all of the eight-month courses that are happening, like there will be some courses that are more important than others and working with the evaluator to figure out what does that look like. We'll also have to figure out who could dedicate that amount of time. And frankly, I don't know that we would expect that to be volunteer time. So we would have to think about some kind of compensation for somebody who would take on that role. But that's where thinking of particular courses that seem pertinent would be something to work in Croll, and I think we could be looking at that throughout the process. So I appreciate the creativity.
Okay. So in that regard, then, so as to be able to support the amendments, I would amend Councilmember Kassar's amendment in two respects. First, I would move the 14 days to 30 days. And then in the language about the observer right at the end, work with the community too, and I would add the language, "to allow for a community observer as appropriate," comma, "and to establish a process of co-observation and co-evaluation." Councilmember Kassar, would those amendments be two that you would accept?
I, I think if that's going to get consensus support, I can, I can do that. As the Deputy City Manager mentioned, I think this would be a process that we're not fully dictating or laying out here. So I would assume that if what it comes down to is there are some classes where it's, where everybody agrees it's best for, there to be a person, or if somebody is available only for the first set of classes, and then there's somebody that's determining that it's better for the other set, then that, then I want it to be open and flexible to that. But it sounds like you're trying to guarantee is that on top of, for example, Croll participating, that you're not going to have three people, three additional people. You're saying that there, you want to minimize the number of folks and maybe they can come up with a system by which they say here's, everybody agrees on who that representative person would be. And maybe at some point that it has to be someone else other than that person if they're busy or something. But I think that's what I'm understanding from you.
That's right. And putting in the language as appropriate, "to allow for a community observer as appropriate," means that they can look at the system and the classes and figure out the best way to do that, taking into account all of the things that you just mentioned.
That makes sense.
Does anybody, does anybody have an objection to those two changes being made to the Kassar amendment?
I have a question.
Yes, Councilmember Kitchen and Councilmember Togo.
Okay. So my question is, goes to the, the 30 days. So if, and I want to make sure I'm reading it right, because Councilmember Kassar's amendment says that city managers shall not bring a budget amendment for council for the class unless, unless all steps are complete or will be complete within 30 days of the budget amendment. So does that mean that they must be complete before you start the 144th pilot class?
Yes, I think.
It'd have to be 30 days after the budget, budget amendment before you could start the class. Is that right?
Yes, because that, that, that line remains. The city manager may only commence the class after recommendations, evaluation review have been incorporated.
I think, I think they're talking, I think there's two issues, if I can.
I'm sorry, the first, the city manager may only commence 144th pilot class if all steps in the blueprint are complete.
Okay.
The first sentence in the paragraph.
Okay. So, so that means that we're just, we're just, so I'm just wanting to understand how that works in practice. So, and I guess the budget amendment will come back to us and we can make it contingent upon completing all steps. But I assume that that means that we'll get a report or our, the staff will come back to us and let us see that, that everything is complete. I just want to, I, I think that these are, this is a key point for the public to understand that these things will actually be done before the class starts. So I think the language here is, is good and I'm fine with the 30 days. I'm just asking in practically, how is this going to work?
So, Manager, can you certify as the class is beginning that the blueprint steps have been accomplished?
We can. And Mayor, Council, I mean, these are part of the, the reporting structures that not only we are putting in place, but that have been identified as part of these amendments that are being considered by council. I'll ask if the Deputy City Manager wants to add anything more, but that would be the, the way in which we're evaluating ourselves is if those steps would be complete before commencing the class.
Thank you, Manager. And, and that is true. I think that we had anticipated all along when we heard Croll's report that that was just a preliminary assessment. APD and their response to Croll report so that they would complete most of the items in the short-term list by mid-April. So we are wanting Croll to, A, finish out what they heard and the questions that you shared with them at the last meeting, B, finish up some of the reporting that they had to do. They met with TECOL and met with other folks as well. And then C, certify that APD had in fact completed those short-term measures, which is what really is guiding the blueprint as we move forward. So we anticipate coming back to you towards the end of April to share back the final Croll report and to be able to be accountable to what those measures that APD said they would finish are done. So we are hoping to come back and that should still fit within our 30-day timeframe.
Okay. So I'm just going to repeat to make sure I'm understanding. So with this, with this amendment language, "may only commence if all steps in the blueprint are complete", there will be a step that staff comes back and publicly reports to council that all steps are complete. Is that what I heard?
Yes, that is our intention. And it is then that we would bring forward to a budget amendment to Councilmember Alter's appoint. It is a big moment to think about moving us forward.
Yes, but that's not what we, this reads that the budget amendment would come before the steps are complete. It'd be complete within 30 days.
Correct. The, the budget amendment will come back with the manager's representation that they've either been completed or will be completed within 30 days. And, and Councilmember Kitchen's question is, if the budget amendment was approved, was approved on the basis that things would be completed within 30 days, will there in fact be a certification at the end of the 30 days?
Right.
That in fact, the blueprint was completed?
Yes.
Yes.
So what does certification mean? Does that mean a memo to council or coming and talking to us? I, I think, I'm just trying to be real clear and transparent for the public. What does certification mean?
So in my mind, this would at a minimum be a memo to Mayor and Council, talking about the steps that have been completed and how they were completed. And then we could create space at a work session if needed to have additional discussions around that. But
Okay.
At a minimum, a report, that would be a written document talking about the steps that have been completed and therefore the class can commence.
Okay, okay.
Any other comments on, any objections to my amendments to Kassar's amendment? Yes.
I wanted to just clarify, I wanted to clarify the change to the second bullet, your edit to Councilmember Kassar's amendment.
It's a, it would be adding language. It continues as, "an independent evaluator shall be included to observe the 144th pilot class and such an evaluator," which I think imagine may very well be Croll, "shall work with a group of community members such as those from the Reimagine Public Safety Task Force, the Community Video Review Panel, Community Police Review Panel 2." And then I've added the words, "allow for a, a community observer as appropriate," and to establish and continue with that language.
Thank you.
Councilmember Alter?
I had a, a question on another part of his amendment, not on yours.
Okay. Without objection, then, my amendments to Kassar's amendment are now part of the Kassar amendment. Back to debate on the Kassar amendment. Councilmember Alter?
Thank you. Councilmember Kassar, I wanted to get some, sorry, I just moved. I wanted to get some clarification on the first part of the last big red section where you said the city manager may only commence the 145th cadet class after recommendations from the evaluations review of the 144th pilot cadet class have been incorporated. The second part of that sentence is already in my amendment and is probably stronger in my amendment. But I want to make sure that I'm clear on what that first half means, because I think there's a couple of different ways to interpret it. And there's one way to interpret it that I would be very comfortable with and another way that I, that I wouldn't be. So I wanted to hear what you had in mind.
If this is the pilot class that we want to learn from, then I think it's really important for the, that learning to be incorporated into the next class. Otherwise, then you are, otherwise then it's, then the next class is essentially also a pilot class. So the goal is for there to actually be substantial learning from this class incorporated into the next class so that we're not starting the next class without having learned from this. And so exactly the timeline and the process for that, I haven't directly specified here. So I'm open to, to further defining that in a way that achieves success for, for the amendment.
So I would just like to clarify, because I, I agree with what you just said, but I wouldn't be comfortable if what you're saying is we have to end the 144th class and then go through like a whole evaluation and wait three months to hear that revaluation and then start the next class. My image of what we are setting out is not only to change the academy, but also to change the whole process so that we're learning and we're reevaluating and fixing things as we go. And so I would expect all of that learning to be part of it. But I wouldn't be so comfortable with saying we have to pause and wait three months at the end of this academy before we can start the 140, 45th one. And so I just want to clarify that it's the former interpretation and not the latter, because there's some ambiguity.
I, I
And they would still do an evaluation. I would still expect them to do an evaluation and incorporate it, but they wouldn't have to necessarily wait to start to have all of that, the final version done.
So I think what you've drawn here are two, two versions that are potentially more, more on different sides of an extreme than what I would want to see happen. I wouldn't want us to just say, well, we went through that class already. We already went through that day on the academy, so we've learned what we need to learn. And then that, I think that that is too little, because that, that, when you've described this, it sounds to me like real evaluation and learning that could be incorporated into the next class. Nor am I saying that we absolutely need a three-month period at the tail end of the 144th. What I'm trying to, to lay out is less of a timeline and more of a principle that, that the manager and frankly, the, the team, the entire team that's supporting the manager on this should be able to say confidently that we have the value, been doing evaluation of a pilot class and that that has actually dutifully been implemented and further changes made for the 145th as we go. Does that make sense? So this, again, I think deliberately does not lay out specifically what the timeline is for that, but rather a So this, again, I think deliberately does not lay out specifically what the timeline is for that, but rather a, a, a a principle by which we judge whether that works or not.
Thank you. Um, I appreciate that and the principle I, I support. I was just wondering if Ms. Dr. Kringen would like to speak to what else she's thinking of in terms of evaluation.
Sure, absolutely. So, um, part of the thing that we're trying to build in is evaluation. Um, but also making sure that the cadets feel comfortable being able to do it. So I'm already reaching out to academic colleagues to see if they're willing to do it as an external, right? Um, so that they, so we have more of an independent evaluation. Um, and that we would be then reporting the aggregate of, you know, what happens, um, throughout the academy. Um, but obviously resources are constrained. Um, so the, the contrast is we would then be doing it internally, but the methodological sort of repercussion is that we may not get the same type of responses from the cadets on terms of, um, their willingness to, uh, discuss their experiences. Um, so that's usually why I would say partnering with an academic institution outside, um, so that they know that their responses are actually anonymous. Um, so those are some of the things that we're working through and trying to figure out the details of. Um, but, um, those are just some of my initial thoughts on it. Um, however, either way, we'll be either doing it internally or partnering with someone externally so that we can, um, perhaps get, um, better responses from the cadets. It's just a trade-off.
So, so I would, I would hope that while the class was going on, there was constant and continual evaluation. I mean, at the end of any day, saying, you know, in the next class, we need to do what we did today differently. And I think that's part of the evaluation, that you don't have to wait till the whole class is over to start the evaluation. To Greg's point, to council member Qassar's point, I think there's some things probably that are going to have to be looked at after the whole cadet class is over. Um, but then also, uh, some of the evaluation of the cadet class probably comes a year later. When you look at, uh, cadets that have now been out on the force for a year and you're looking at how they're experiencing and dealing with being out a year relative to the class they just had. So I'm not sure there are really black and white lines to be drawn with respect to evaluation. I think it goes back to council member Qassar's point that the intent here is the principle of let's make sure that we actually learn from this class before we do the next class. Uh, recognizing that we can start learning on day one of the class, but we will continue learning well after the class is over. That's how I would interpret that and, and believe the intent to be as I vote.
If I may, Mayor, just, uh, sort of interject a moment, but I know that I have heard Dr. Kringen say, uh, at least to staff and I, and I believe that she can clarify if I'm wrong, that certainly the evaluation is intended to be consecutively and, and happened throughout the academy so that we're not starting at the end of it and trying to look back, but rather we're going to take those pieces as they're being periodically evaluated and then adding them to your point in the aggregate at the end of the academy as well. Am I correct in that?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, I just tend to get stuck on the details of who does the evaluation to ensure that the data that we actually capture is accurate, um, because I think that's really, really important. Um, that our cadets feel that they can, you know, um, respond accordingly. Um, and so, yeah, no, but in terms of timeline, absolutely throughout the entire academy. Um, and, you know, to the mayor's point, um, one of the things that I know Austin Police Department is very committed to is improving data systems so that we can actually follow up after field training. Um, I gave a talk earlier today where this was part of the discussion is we cannot actually track from who applies to who is successful in their career and how they are doing in field training um, and performance measurement, um, and that is across the nation. And so I know that Austin is very committed to being able to do that type of evaluation, um, but we're just not there yet as we're trying to build out our data systems to do those types of evaluations.
Any other, on the Qassar amendment, council member Kitchen, then council member Alter.
Um, I think it, these, the statement that, um, council member Qassar has that we've been talking about, I think is necessary. Um, I, I think it's a fundamental principle that we will not start our next class until until we have, um, incorporated recommendations from the evaluation. So I appreciate that statement in there. That, that is what our public, what our community is expecting. And that's what I would expect of a pilot. That's what this is, is a pilot. So a pilot means we do it, we learn from it, and then we use what we learned. Uh, I would not feel comfortable if we weren't going to use what we learned before and incorporated in the 145th cadet class. The other thing I wanted to say, going back on my previous point, and I, I lost connection for a while, so I apologize if I missed this, but I would like to ask the city manager, as part of bringing the, um, budget amendment back to us, that he clarified to us exactly what certification means. At the point that, um, city manager, at the point that you bring the budget amendment to us, you will potentially have 30, 30 days to complete before the class starts. Um, and there'll be a certification process. I think we really need to understand exactly what the certification process means. I'm happy to talk with you more about that between now and the time the budget amendment comes back to us. But this is so, this is a critical point for all of us to understand and the public to understand. As council member said, in some ways, we're taking a leap of faith, which we need to do. Uh, but we also need to, to be really, really clear on how we know before it starts uh, that these changes have been made. So certification concept sounds good to me, but I still have a lot of questions about exactly what that looks like. But I think that we can deal with that as part of, of a budget amendment. So I would ask that you bring forward to us as part of the budget amendment, what, what you're thinking a certification process means exactly, and we can have a conversation at that point. Um, and make sure that it is a, a process that everyone feels comfortable with as a way to understand when all, when all of these steps are complete. Is that something you can do, city manager?
I certainly hear your feedback, council member, and we'll talk to you about just what that essentially reports and, and how to make sure that we're showing the completion of these elements in the blueprint, uh, to provide the council and the community that level of confidence that everything has been done. But I, I, I get your point and I understand.
Okay.
Councilmember Alter.
Thank you. I just wanted to close the loop on the conversation before about the, the last part and, and just say that, um, I'm totally on board with this as a, you know, the principle of learning and, and, you know, given the, the clarifications of what that meant and what that didn't mean, I, I'm comfortable, um, with that portion. Um, you know, we are not going to be done learning when the 145th um, Cadet Academy starts. Um, and so I just want us to understand that this is going to be an ongoing process. This is a major undertaking, you know, I've been a professor and you do, you do your, your syllabi, you do your curriculum and you have to keep modifying it and it can take a long time. And this is a lot of complicated moving parts and a lot of people um, and a lot of different, um, things that have to be learned. And I think we have to, to keep that, um, in mind. Um, and then I just, you know, wanted to invite Dr. Kringen and, um, city manager. If, if we need funding so that we can evaluate appropriately, um, so that we can give confidence to the community and we can know to the extent that you can measure it, whether the academy is, um, working, I would encourage us to do that. I would encourage us to think about whether there are graduate students or whether there are folks at UT now that we have this contract that this deputy city manager arranged that we can set up some opportunities for some academic study of this, which we may or may not pay for, but that may give somebody, you know, some really important data um, to do some work that could shed light on, um, that would be interesting to incorporate, um, as appropriate as we move forward. And if we need resources, I would like to hear about that.
Okay. Let's take a vote on the Qassar amendments. Those in favor of the Qassar amendments, please raise your hand. Those opposed? I think that's everybody. Uh, we have the main motion in front of us, uh, as amended. Any further discussion before we vote?
Mayor? Sorry, uh, Mayor, I'm sorry. Myself and I believe council member Tovo were against the amendments.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Kelly votes no. Was there another no? Councilmember Tovo, did you vote? How'd you vote on the Qassar amendment?
It looks like she's frozen. I thought I saw her hand go up.
She's back. You're muted. You're frozen. You're, you're muted.
Can you do a hand signal? So on the, did you vote for it or vote against it?
Vote for it, sorry, amendment. All right, council member, 10 to 1, the Qassar amendment passes. Now discussion on the item 37. Councilmember Kitchen.
Um, just a clarification, there's a, there's some slight differences between the Qassar amendment and uh, council member Alter's amendment. So when they're put together, I'm wanting to understand how that's going to be done. Um, I would assume that council member Qassar's is amended onto council member Alter's, so so we would use in his language. Uh, but if you want, I can be specific.
Why don't you be specific so that we?
Okay, so, and it may just be the way that I am reading them, but, um, council member Alter's has, um, her language about the, uh, incorporating the findings into reforms for future classes, she has as feasible. So the term as feasible doesn't seem consistent with the conversation we just had. Uh, because council member Qassar doesn't, doesn't modify his by the term as feasible. So I would just think that, you know, if I'm not, unless I'm not understanding.
I'm not seeing where it says as feasible.
But in any respect, you, you couldn't be expected to do it where it wasn't feasible. So I'm not really sure it's, it's actually a conflict. That's where we're concerned.
Which bullet is it in?
It, it's, what, I, what it does to me is it, is it puts a modifier on whether or not you're going to incorporate what we've learned from the pilot into the 145th.
Okay, so, so what I, what I meant was that, you know, there may be, we don't have the, we don't have the final report from Kroll. Um, and there may be, as of now, what they have said, and which is why we have the whereas and the others, is they've said that you shouldn't do the 145th unless you incorporate all of our long-term, um, all, all of our long-term recommendations. Um, so we don't actually have that.
It's not in the Kroll part, it's in the bullets before that?
Councilor Qassar?
But I, I don't care if we take out as feasible.
Okay.
That doesn't, that's still important.
My, my, my staff considered whether we would alter mine for council member Alter's, but in looking at it, my sense is that they don't conflict anywhere. There are some places where my language is somewhat more specific or strong. Some places where actually that's the case in council member Alter's. So just like with other resolutions, my assumption would be, but we can make it explicit, is that since they overlap, wherever it's more specific, specificity controls, anywhere it's more strong, uh, that, that higher bar controls. And that actually applies in both cases. In some places, council member Alter's is, is more specific and, and I would assume that that would be the, the guiding principle.
Manager, deputy manager, you okay with that interpretation and guidance?
I defer to others if they have some specific, um, areas of conflict, but I think we can read it that way.
Okay.
For what it's worth, I read as feasible with or without thy word to mean the same thing.
I just want to be clear, because, you know, for the, for the public, you know.
That's okay.
Be wondering what that means.
All right, the Qassar amendment, no, the base motion 37 is now in front of us as amended. Uh, let's go ahead and take a vote. Uh, those in favor, please raise your hand.
Well, are we at that, at the final vote here? I think me and Natasha others wanted to, never seen.
They would speak, okay.
But I, I, I saw the mayor pro tem raise your hand.
Mayor Pro Tem, do you want to speak?
I do, and I actually still had a question. Hopefully I haven't missed that opportunity.
You have not.
So, you know, I appreciate council member Kitchen's line of questioning, and I think I got kicked off for a little bit, but I think I heard um, uh, something that I was thinking about, you know, how and when do we assess proficiency? And so I, I think, I'm getting the feeling that that was addressed, but I, I don't know whether or not um, we have laid it plain, what does this item do? You know, I, I heard a lot of folks who their commentary seemed to indicate for me that voting yes on this item tonight says we are voting yes to, you know, here on out to resuming cadet classes for the Austin Police Department. Um, and I just want to, I guess I'd just like for somebody to lay plain what this item does for the folks who, um, who had lots of questions about its true meaning.
Sure, council member, I'm happy to answer that question. I think what this resolution as amended says is that it, it is asking for council's approval to move forward with the cadet class in the circumstances that the contents in the blueprint are met. So if the, 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 um, the areas where we talk about transformative change in the blueprint are not met, then a cadet class will not move forward. And so, um, so essentially it lays out that path that says these are the things that we need to change. Um, we're, we're, we're asking for your approval to allow that to move forward and saying this is the path that we're going to go on. And if we continue the path and get to our destination, then a class can move forward. If we don't get to our destination, then in fact, there is no class.
I appreciate that.
I have a quick question. Uh, Mr. Kringen? Uh, in the amendment, there was, um, uh, our requirement that said that the academy curriculum review committee has got to meet at least, uh, uh, four times. Uh, I guess this would be before the, the class would start. Is there enough time for you to, to, to schedule and, and hold those number of meetings? Uh, it's not a lot of time and I want to make sure that you, you put at least those four on the calendar so that uh, their, their calendar didn't help. Is that sufficient? Is there sufficient time to do this?
Sure, sure. And just so I can make sure I'm clear on the timeline, is it four times before the 30 days prior? Or is it four times before the start of the academy class?
Before the academy classes, but if they haven't been held, the manager is going to need to certify that they will be held.
Sure, absolutely. So the way that we've looked at our calendar thus far, um, it's been five times every two weeks. Um, with us finishing out next week, who would actually be on academy, uh, on the, uh, academic curriculum review? Um, but we're still looking for academics and various other community members. So I do actually ask the council to please feel free to send me an email with any names of people that you would also be interested in so we can do a larger search from the search that we've started. Um, but yeah, we should be able to do so.
Okay. I just urge you to schedule those as quickly as you can. I don't want to fall victim to just a scheduling.
Absolutely, I hear you.
Thank you.
I actually wasn't quite done.
And, and which is open to come back to you. I apologize for that.
No worries. I, but something I just recognize is it looks like council member Tovo is still struggling with her internet and I feel um, some sense of obligation to make sure she's able to participate as well. This is a very important conversation. I think we should have the full diets if we can.
Um, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
Oh, there she is.
So I'm, so, let me see.
You're here twice.
I know, sorry, one sec.
That's okay.
For some reason, my computer, my computer desktop keeps freezing and so I'm, I'm here also oddly on my phone. So I'm going to turn my phone camera off, but when I want to be back. So I'm going to turn my phone camera off, but when I want to be back, when I want to converse with you guys again, I'm going to switch to my phone. But I'm here, but thank you so much, Mayor Protem, for the
Of course.
Question.
Well, so I guess I'll just sort of move into, you know, final commentary then. I'm struggling with this item, if I'm being entirely candid. I want to thank everybody who's added their voice to this conversation this over a year. We originally passed my resolution that called for this review of our police department's training protocols. And we set a deadline for June of 2020 and then the pandemic. But, you know, it really did have the silver lining that it gave us time to really fold our cadet training conversation into the larger dialogue about reimagining public safety. So I think we'd be doing ourselves and everyone watching a disservice if we didn't take a moment to remember what brought us here. I appreciate that Chief Gay pointed that out because it really is one of my founding principles in this conversation about public safety and our journey towards justice. That trip has to involve, it has to involve reconciling with the racism that continues to lurk in the shadows of our public institutions and recognize that sometimes it slips out into the light in full view. I think getting rid of the so-called bad apples is not the full solution. We have reported after report after report, you know, that talk about our culture of bigotry and sexism. And I think I'm super inspired by the work that our community has done. And I recognize that this desire to restart cadet classes is deep and, you know, very personal for some folks. And I absolutely recognize why. I also appreciate the amendments, you know, that were presented by Councilmember Kassar and Alter. I think they addressed a lot of my concerns, but I also just want to make sure that we're being very clear when we're having this conversation and deliberation that this is not the final decision to resume cadet classes. This is one of a two-step process. And so I'm in lockstep with the community here. When they tell us don't resume, we're not ready. We haven't done what it is that they've expected from us, you know. We haven't had the opportunity to hear from the Reimagining Public Safety Task Force. I want to make sure that they know that I support them and that rationale. But I also recognize that flipping this one switch is not, you know, is not the end-all. I know we have one more switch to flip. So I'll be listening closely when the task force does tell us what they have to tell us in coming weeks. And I think what they say and what our constituents who have spent so much of their time being a part of this conversation say, all of that about my decision about flipping that second switch to resume the academy. We got here because of a loss of trust. I really think we can move forward until we're certain that we can be transparent, that we can be collaborative, and that we can regain that trust. And truthfully, I'm not entirely convinced that we're there yet. I do think the amendments are a step in the right direction, and I look forward to continuing this conversation.
Councilmember Kassar and then Councilmember Kitchen.
Thanks, Mayor. I do want to take a minute to, again, like the Mayor Protem said, to remind ourselves of what got us here. I want to thank the former cadets that came and testified to us now so many months ago that I think really shaped my views on this and I think so many views in the community. And I know that's not an easy thing to do. So I appreciate them coming forward. I appreciate the change that has happened since then because certainly through these presentations, it's clear that there has been change. I appreciate people within the department, and now you, Ms. Krigen, and the folks at Crowell and OPO and Equity Office and everyone that has worked to create some real change to this point and more promised change here in the blueprint. And I also want to appreciate the task force members and their continued work. I think it's important to point out that from the manager's memo, that these dollars that would be presented to us would not come from the reimagining safety dollars, nor would they come from the services we've chosen to improve. And so I still think we can get and receive those recommendations on the budget. And we'll be looking towards those recommendations. This doesn't short-circuit that. And I also want to appreciate council members for, one, these amendments, and, two, for taking the time to make the hard decision of pausing the academy for a short while because clearly with all these changes being made, I don't think we would have had these changes if it were not for that vote. So I do want to recognize, thank people that have gotten us this far, recognize some of that important work and appreciate the amendments being incorporated. I also ultimately, and the people I've been able to tell under forum rules, I've done my best to tell that I'm still not at a place where I'm comfortable supporting this primarily because so much of this work, I believe, could have gotten done leading to this point where we would have really broad agreements in the community that we were fully ready. You know, I appreciate that we're going to have the four meetings with the curriculum review team, but it would have been best to have had them before so that we're not trying to say, let's try to get them done before a budget amendment. And then to say, and the budget amendment can come with thirty days left to complete steps because we aren't there yet. And so I still don't feel fully comfortable that we have taken the time necessary to get this baked in time for it starting. I think with, could have been even just a few weeks, that could have gotten more folks there. But I do appreciate the important work in the blueprint and the important improvements made over time. And so I want to appreciate that work because that is real work, even if it still hasn't gone all the way there for me yet.
Okay. Councilman Fuentes.
Thank you. And, you know, I think for me, this is a tough one. And certainly, you know, thank you to everyone involved, our police department and our task force for coming together and for this council, with the exception of Councilmember Kelly and I, this council committed to reimagine public safety. And I know that conversation has been a long time coming and one that our community is dedicated to. It gives me hope to see the commitment to the recommendations, the short-term and long-term recommendations that were laid out in the Crowell report and to see progress already made on those recommendations. But what doesn't sit right with me is that the task force was not engaged in the blueprint and the laying out of the path forward. And so, you know, I think we need to walk hand in hand with our community. If we set up a community task force structure, that they should be equally at the table and understanding the process and having the opportunity to weigh in, especially when you lay out the process to move forward. But so, and as Councilmember or Mayor Protem Harper-Madison said, this is a two-step process. And I know that today's vote is contingent on the next vote, which will actually fund the next academy. So for this vote, I'm going to abstain, and I hope to see more progress done so that I can get to a place of yes in funding the Cadet Academy. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, where I am on this, the chief, did you want to say something?
Just making sure you can hear me, Mayor?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, city managers, Chuck, Assistant Chief with the Austin Police Department. I know that one of the next items we're going to take up is talking about my confirmation. But I didn't want to lose the moment right now when we're talking about this very important topic to just voice my commitment to move this effort forward for our police department, for this community, to ensure that, for all the reasons that have been stated here, I certainly don't need to repeat them, but just for you to know that I'm in lockstep with everything that we're trying to accomplish and that you have my commitment to move it forward. Thank you for that.
Chief, thank you. You know, I appreciate colleagues beginning with recognizing where we started with this and we've already been because I think that's really important. And I think it is kind of remarkable that it was the Mayor Protem's actual movement in 2019 that said we need to take a look at the curriculum and at the cadet classes. We went through that next year, and as part of the budget process, we did, I think, three really important things with respect to the cadet classes. The first is that we said we were going to cut three classes. We're going to take the money associated with those three classes and repurpose those dollars to other public safety expenditures that were priorities in the community. And we have seen how that six and a half million dollars has been redeployed for mental health intervention and housing so that people can get out of tents and off our street corners and housing for spouses that are being threatened in their homes. And I think that was a really good reuse of those dollars that really focused on what it takes to keep a community that safe. The second thing we did is we recognized as part of that same action that we would consider doing another cassette class or two in fiscal year twenty-one. And obviously, we're not considering anything more than this one right now, but it was something that we indicated at the same time we took that earlier action that we would do. The third thing that we did back at that budget process was we cut some of the police positions, unfilled positions at the time, but we cut police positions and redesignated and identified what was our authorized personnel count at that time. And we did that after having removed those positions that we cut. I think it's important to note that even with a one hundred and forty-fourth cadet class and those cadets becoming police officers, we will still be below the authorized police count that we set at the same time that we were cutting those three police cadet classes and at the same time that we were cutting positions on the police force. So this is entirely consistent with the actions that we took back then because it set up what has been, I think, a pretty remarkable process to really reimagine public safety and policing in the context of public safety. And I'm really proud to live in a city that recognizes that that true and real transformative change often requires some measure of disruption in order to actually do really fundamental work. You know, there are a lot of other cities that have talked about reimagining policing in the context of public safety, but very, very few of them are actually doing the work. And our community is. Our community does not want our police to be the way our community deals with and intersects with poverty. Our community doesn't want our police to be our mental health first responders. And this is the work of reimagining public safety. The work being done by the task force, our staff, police monitor, the Equity Office is going to help us understand what a police force looks like with those kind of responsibilities removed, better delegated. Now, there could be a day when we don't need police, and I eagerly hope for the day when we get there, but that day isn't today. And there's much work to do, but we also have to recognize that that much work has already been done. We have the reports from Dr. Villanueva, Dr. Ferguson, the Community AP Equity Assessment, the James Joyce Consulting Report, the reports from the Video Review Panel, the CVRP summary reports, plus the work that by this blueprint still has to be done before any new cadet class starts. The city manager's blueprint, I think, recognizes the work that has been done, but also the work that still needs to be done. I think it recognizes that cadets represent probably our best chance of adding diversity onto our police force. These cadets can and must be the cultural change agents in our police force. We need to change the culture in APD, and that includes how we train and how we educate new officers, and we need to do that well. And we also need cadets and new police officers. We need to do both. And I believe the blueprint today moves us forward in a constructive way. Process isn't perfect, the path's not going to please everybody. Yet, again, there is no city in the country that is doing more than Austin in reimagining public safety, and for that, I think we should all be proud. I am, and I'm going to vote for this resolution. Councilmember Kitchen.
I am also torn on this one because I agree with the intentions, and I think there are good intentions here, but in order to earn the trust of the community, we have to be transparent and show results. So I will vote for it today, but just on a couple of conditions. One, this is a two-step process. As Mayor Protem pointed out, I will not be voting for the budget amendment if I don't have some clarity on what the certification process is. In other words, I have an expectation, I will have an expectation in voting for the budget amendment that we have either completed or I will have some surety that I will know that it will be completed and I will know what the certification process is. So the fundamental thing here is that, as is evidenced by Councilmember Alter and Councilmember Kassar's amendments, what we are saying here is that the cadet class will not begin until after the Crowell amendment, the Crowell report, after the final Crowell report, and the report from the task force are presented to us. And that will not be begun until after all of the items in the blueprint are met. So that's my expectation. And so I'm a little bit uncomfortable today because it's not entirely clear to me on what that certification process is, but I will vote to move this forward. But my expectation will be at the point that a budget amendment is brought to us, I want to have a certification process that's transparent to the public so that we will know that the blueprint items have been met before we start the class.
Thank you. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, everyone, for providing your unique perspective on this. I feel there are a few more fundamental services that can be provided to humanity than education. We rely on schools and academies to enlighten, inform, and encourage. They also promote good character and build bonds of friendship in the community. In the case of our Austin Police Academy, the education is to protect and to serve. Our police department over the last year has been vilified, smeared, broken apart, and silenced. Morale in the department has plummeted. These officers are our employees. No employee of the City of Austin, regardless of the department that they work for, should ever have been demoralized and demeaned as the police have been these past few years. I am hopeful that we can create meaningful change in the department and start with a new academy. May today be a turning point here in Austin as we finally pass for a diverse and compassionate police force to educate, grow, and be proud of. It's a first small step in what I hope will be a movement towards a realistic approach to policing. I commend the work that APD has done over the years to improve their culture, methods, and information flow at the academy. I believe there should be no further delay or no further restrictions on our cadet class. I hope that the time is now to bring forward the Police Academy, and I hope that we can bring back a time when it was protocol on council to speak highly of the people whose policies, ideas are opposite our own, even more so if they're our employees or valued public safety officers. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kitchen?
There was one last part that I don't think I've been entirely clear on when I speak in terms of the certification process, and I'm using that term as the process for certifying that the blueprint items have been met. I think it will be important, city manager, that there is a part of that process involves the community. So I'll be happy to work with you, but I think that the community needs to be part of that certification process, and so we can have some of the conversations about what that might
And so we can have some of the conversations about what that might look like.
Got it. Anyone else want to talk before we take a vote? Councilmember Alter?
Councilmember Ellis had her hand up before.
Councilmember Ellis, you want to go?
Yes. And I also saw that Pio may have had his hand up. So we'll all look out for each other.
Sorry, guys.
It's okay. My thoughts on this have been well expressed by a number of my colleagues. Probably similarly to how Councilmember Kitchen kind of laid it out. I'm cautious. There is still work to do. There are still voices to be heard. But I think it's important, after so many stakeholders have been able to provide input, that we understand what the next steps are and what the expectations are moving forward. So because we've been able to, to map out a number of different items of framework in the blueprint, some guardrails, there will be a budget amendment. And I'm also very curious to know how the certification will look so that we understand that we're not letting go of some process that we care about so deeply. So I'm willing to support this today, knowing there are those guardrails in place and really appreciate all of the work that's gone into it to truly get to a place where we are reimagining public safety.
Councilmember Attena.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm also going to be supporting this, this item. You know, I first came on, I was a big advocate for community policing because we implemented community policing in our neighborhood and saw how it improved our neighborhood and made it safer. And so I really hope that this new training, and I was excited to hear that they were going to pause the training and allow the cadets to go out into the community, to get to know the community. And I think that's very important that we do that. These officers need to get out there before they get influenced by any other officer to get to learn the community and understand, you know, the issues that we're facing out here. And I think if we do it, and I feel like we're going to be doing it the right way, we're going to be able to solve a lot of our problems. So I'm really, really optimistic that this could be the new policing. And I just hope that, and you're going to have my support to make sure that it gets done the right way. If not, I'll be the first one to be voting against any more classes.
Thank you. Anyone want to speak before I recognize Councilmember Alter? Councilmember Alter. Leslie Po. Councilmember Po.
Oh, heck, why not? This has been a really long road, a really long road. And I feel a sense of optimism and a coming together in our community that I really hope we can make even more robust. I will be supporting this. I think it's the right thing for us at this time. And I, I think our staff is very clear on what the expectations of the dais are and the community, and of each other, and the leadership of the city and the path forward for, for our city. It's been hard. And I would like us to have some successes that we can all join and, and be proud of. And so I look forward to the next iterations that our staff will be bringing to us. Thanks so much for the work that you all have been doing with the community and the stakeholders. And there's way more ahead. And this is a vote of confidence from me that you will be able to accomplish the heavy task that's in front of you.
Thank you. Councilmember Alter.
Thank you. I want to thank our staff and our community and this body for all the work that has gone in to get us to where we are at this point. We are on this journey of reimagining public safety. And we're doing it at the time that we're dealing with a pandemic and a climate crisis and all sorts, and a storm and, and everything else. And I'm really proud that we have been willing to take risks. We've been willing to say we're not good enough. We've been willing to say that not everyone in our community feels safe. We've been able to recognize that we ask too much of our police officers and that we have an obligation to provide an education to our officers so that they can become the officers that we know that they can be. Tonight's vote is not the final vote. We have to take a vote on the budget. And I believe what I've heard loud and clearly, and I concur with, with my colleagues, is that we will not advance that budget amendment if the steps that are promised in this blueprint are not fulfilled. And that, let that be an incentive to all who are responsible for getting that done, that we mean business. We, we expressed that in August, when we didn't extend the other class. We will follow through if we need to. At the same time, we are expressing that we are on this journey as a community. We have many needs that we have to meet, staffing being one of those. And by saying we move forward today, we're taking a leap of faith. But we're taking that together as a community with our staff and with our APD so that we can take the next step on this journey. Even the 144th class, it is a pilot. The 145th class, we're going to have to come up with another name for it. You know, it's going to be our Pilot 2.0. It is going to take time to get this right. And what we're trying to launch today is a culture and a commitment and a willingness to allow us to learn and perfect and get it right so that we can transform our police department. So I'm, I'm, I'm excited and nervous. And I recognize that this is not a perfect process. But I think it's the next step that we need to take on our journey. So thank you.
Anything else, colleagues, before we take a vote? Let's take a vote. Those in favor of this item 37 as amended, please raise your hand. Those opposed, please raise your hand. Councilmember Casar voting no. Those abstaining, please raise your hand. The Mayor Protem and Councilmember Fuentes. The others voting aye. It passes eight, one, two. All right. Good, it was good work. We have two more items. Remember, don't forget that we laid on the table the 17, 167, rather.
Sixty-seven.
So we'll come back to that. But before we do-